Дорогие коллеги, если вы хотите, чтобы вы посетили позиции, и скоро начнется. Всем привет, Мистер Ника. Дорогие коллеги, добро пожаловать на сегодняшний комитетный заседание. Первое, что будет включено в агентство, это принятие агентства. Если нет комментариев, агентство может быть принято. Я не видел никаких комментариев. Теперь я хочу поздороваться с вами, коллеги, что сегодняшнее заседание было веб-стримовано, что мы имеем интерпретацию в всех языках, кроме только для мальтийского языка. И чтобы напомнить вам, прежде чем перейти к заседанию, из-за того, что нам нужно быстро двигаться в направлении по созданию рынка электричества и передаче информации, я бы хотел напомнить, что дата для принятия amendments на ЕМД будет 23 мая в 5:00 утра, и передача информации на следующий день, 24 мая 2023 года, конечно, в 5:00 утра, 17 часов. Третье item на агентстве будет введением в ваше дело, что решение координатора этого заседания 28 марта было сообщено всем представителям ЕТРЕ через электронную почту. Теперь мы перейдем к главному пункту нашего заседания в этот вечер, который является общественным заседанием по реформе рынка электричества. Я хотел бы приветствовать всех представителей этого общественного заседания и поблагодарить их за то, что приняли нашу invitation. Я просто объявлю, и тогда, конечно, мы будем слушать каждого из наших гостей, что у нас сегодня вместе с нами мистер Конрад Пурчала, менеджер директора системы управления в Польской СIECie Energetice, который является польским ТСО в электричестве. Также у нас есть миссия Наталья Фабра, профессора экономики в Университете Carlos III de Madrid, Carlos Tres, она находится далеко, я думаю. Теперь у нас мистер Джордж Захман, старший коллега в Брюгель, очень известный в тинк-тэнг. Теперь у нас профессор Хорхе Пасконхелос, член НЕУЭС New Energy Solutions. У нас есть мистер Хаомел Лофредо, старший энергетический офицер и лидер команды энергии в BEUK, европейской организации потребительских организаций. И, наконец, но не последнее, Кристиан Руби, секретарь-главный Евроэлектрики. Просто напомнить вам, дорогие коллеги, и тогда я перейду прямо к гостям, что 14 марта Европейская комиссия предложила пакет реформ к существующему рынку электричества, влияющий на несколько законов. Конечно, цель в этом – это加快 renewable generation и уменьшить расходы фосфорных газов в соответствии с нашим агентством для изменения климата 2050 и 2030, а также поддерживать ЕС, чтобы сделать электричество менее зависимым от негативных цен фосфорных fuels. Это очень важно в этих моментах, которые мы испытали и, возможно, мы испытаем в ближайшем будущем, чтобы лучше защитить пользователей от будущих подъемов цен и потенциального маркет-манипуляции, и сделать индустрию ЕС чистой и более конкурентивной. Служители и тени для конфликта были appointed, и 定了 ambitious timetable, и скоро мы также переседаем с другими комитетами Европейского парламента, чтобы быть на время. Это наша цель – продвигать конфликты быстрыми способами, и поэтому это общественное заседание – это отличная возможность услышать мнения stakeholders и экспертов о данной теме и проводить обмен мнениями. У нас около двух часов для этого заседания. Как я сказал, первым мы перейдем к гостям, к экспертам, затем у нас будет первый раунд слушателей и теней, затем у нас будут ответы на первый раунд, и затем у нас будет второй раунд, когда у нас будут координаторы, но также другие коллеги, готовые задавать вопросы или оставить комментарии, услышать мнение esteemed экспертов, которые у нас сегодня. Приведя это в виду, я перейду прямо к первому присутствователю, который является мистер Пурчала. Пожалуйста, у вас есть заседание.
Большое спасибо, distinguished members of the parliament. Меня зовут Конрад Пурхава, я работаю для польского ТСО. Я хотел бы поговорить с вами о двух важных элементах энергетической трансмиссии, которые являются мегаваттами, которые являются энергией энергии, и мегаваттами, которые являются капacity. Я хотел бы объяснить вам и обсудить с вами, как эти два продукта вдохновляют безопасность для потребителей Европейских клиентов, и почему рынок электричества ЕС должен глубоко признать вдохновление этих двух продуктов для безопасности. Так что следующая слайда. Что-то случилось с презентацией. Хорошо, я хотел бы начать с продукта, который является энергией – мегаваттами. Для мегаваттами у нас есть renewables, которые являются очень хорошей источником энергии. Они производят чистую, низкую стоимость электричества. Производство мегаваттами энергии из renewables также уменьшает зависимость Европы от imported fossil fuels. Это почему инвестиции в renewables доминируют в инвестициях в генерацию капacity в Европе. В последние годы почти ни одной другой капacity кроме renewables была добавлена в систему. И даже больше инвестиций в renewables планируется и нуждается также для зеленой трансмиссии европейской экономики. В то же время мы все знаем, что успешная инвестирование в renewables требует соблюдения нескольких вызовов, среди которых необходимость расширения сети, необходимость расширения связей, необходимость добавления нового先进ского hardware, чтобы стабилизировать операцию сети, который имеет в виду, что не стоит недооценить производство и delivery cost, также с высокими капитализными затратами. Но мы все в этом направлении, мы все работаем очень жестко, чтобы увеличить вдохновление renewables в мегаваттами, которые являются энергией. Однако мегаваттами не все. Перед мегаваттами нам нужно... Извините, что что-то не работает с высказыванием. Перед мегаваттами у нас также есть capacity, которая является мегаваттами. Какова capacity? Capacity – это способность производить электричество, производить электрическую энергию, когда это необходимо. Почему? Потому что каждый раз, когда клиент включает светлую лампу или миллионы клиентов включают светлые лампы в одно время, некоторые генераторы должны производить больше электричества. Потому что электричество должно быть балансировано в所有时刻, в所有 миллисекундах. Генерация и потребление должно всегда быть в равновесии. Теперь, не все генерации равны в плане способности производить эту электрическую энергию на волe. Есть dispatchable generation, который является традиционной конвенциональной генерацией, которая может быть увеличена в основном на волe, чтобы адаптироваться к потребностям клиентов, которая является нуклеальной, и она также основана на фосфорных газах, как коль, газ, бензин, газ, газ, гидро, геотермал и все остальные ресурсы, которые являются dispatchable. Также есть другие ресурсы, которые не dispatchable, и, к сожалению, одним из них являются renewables, которые являются очень хорошей источником мегаваттами энергии, но не действительно хорошей источником капacity. Теперь, что нам нужно для наших клиентов, для экономики и для бизнесов, это reliable security of supply, и эта reliable security of supply требует не только мегаваттами, не только энергии, но также капacity. И flexibility, очевидно, также будет частью решения. Вы всегда можете позволить клиентам реагировать на цены, disconnect, но вы не можете disconnect весь страна, или вы не можете disconnect 80% потребления. Так что есть ограничения в плане flexibility потребления. Нам нужно flexible generation, все, что есть, из всех технологий, которые доступны сегодня. Это почему я хотел бы сделать сильный point, что рынки капacity, которые рынка для мегаваттов, должны быть частью политики ЕС, и рекаст электрической реглации должна признать важность капacity в сфере безопасности. Развитие renewables, что мы все делаем, и это работает очень быстро, и мы довольно успешно развиваем renewables, должно быть также связано с адекватным развитием мегаваттов из dispatchable sources. И это не так великолепно, потому что мы не видим слишком много инвестиций в dispatchable generation, чтобы устранить старую и генерационную флоту, которая должна отпустить. Рынки капacity должны быть технологиognostics, и они должны быть структурной частью рынка Европейского рынка. Как я уже сказал, нам нужно вдохновление капacity из всех доступных источников. И, к сожалению, в данный момент это, в большей степени, также фосфоризированные источники, которые производят гораздо меньше энергии, но их вдохновление к капacity, чтобы обеспечить безопасность для supply в所有时刻, даже когда ветер не吹, это очень ценное. И я верю, что нам нужно убедиться, что мы останавливаем отпуск старых единиц, и мы строим новые единицы, dispatchable ones, потому что мы не можем позволить европейским электрическим системам и клиентам, которые рискованы температурой, как в старой прединдустриальной области.
Большое спасибо.
Большое спасибо.
Большое спасибо, мистер Пурчала. Служения с scheduled for five minutes, чтобы иметь время для коллег задавать вопросы. Также у вас будет возможность иметь какие-то конечные заключения и ответить на вопросы. Большое спасибо, мистер Пурчала. Я перейду к следующему представителю, который находится далеко от нашей встречи, профессор Фабра.
Привет, добрый вечер.
Привет, мы можем услышать и видеть вас хорошо, пожалуйста.
Отлично, большое спасибо, что меня здесь. Я хочу сделать шаг назад и, вероятно, более широкую перспективу, и начать спросив, какой из главных целей мы хотим, чтобы рынок электричества доставил. Во-первых, мы хотим, чтобы цены электричества для европейских потребителей были конкурентивными и стабильными, и мы хотим, чтобы рынок электричества обеспечил фреймворк, который поддерживает и推动ает энергетическую трансмиссию вперед. Установленный сейчас рынком электричества, я считаю, не доставил целей, которые мы хотим. В течение последних двух лет мы видели, что рынки электричества не успели добиться потребителей, потому что они доставили цены, которые превышают стоимость производителя этой электричества, и они доставили крайне негативные цены, которые негативны далеко более негативны в цене электрической генерации. Давайте будем помнить, что только fraction of total electricity has been produced in gas-fired plants. Цена нуклеальных renewables и гидро remained stable. Конечно, эти очень негативные и не конкурентивные цены пришли на огромный социальный расход для Европы. Мы видели, что они вдохновляют инфраструктуру, они поднимают европейский центральный банк, среди других факторов, чтобы увеличить проценты利息, они повышали poverty энергии, они уменьшили доходы европейских домов, и они внесли много конкурентивности европейской индустрии. Поэтому нам нужно что-то сделать. Европейская комиссия сделала proposal о рынке электричества, и вопрос был, whether this proposal will also deliver on these two objectives. И позвольте сказать upfront, that unfortunately, I think this is not the case. The proposal made by the Commission doesn't really bring anything new that would allow the member states to prevent the episodes of high and volatile prices that we have seen over these two days. And I'm also agnostic as to what they would provide the necessary tools to push the energy transition forward. Let me go step by step. First, the proposal of the Commission to deliver stable prices to European households is to allow member states to regulate retail prices in the case of an emergency. But this is not going to solve the problem. Why? Because the problem is upstream. If we regulate retail prices, but we let generators keep on receiving high electricity prices, at the end somebody is going to have to pay for the difference. And who that's going to be? Probably that's going to be taxpayers. So depending on the financial ability of the member states, they will have different abilities to face this increase in electricity prices. In any case, ultimately it's going to be European citizens who are going to pay these high prices. So why is the problem not solved? Because the problem, as I said before, the root cause of the problem lies in the overremineration of some of the power plants, whose costs of generation are much lower than the prices we have seen over the last two years. So if we want to solve the problem of high and volatile electricity prices in Europe, we really have to empower member states to limit the remuneration of some of the inframarginal producers, including legacy plants, when the prices that they obtain are not justified, first on the basis of their legitimate expectations as investors, and second on the basis of the generation cost. The second proposal of the European Commission to allow European customers to have stable prices is to require retailers to offer fixed-price contracts. This is certainly going to deliver stable prices, but nothing guarantees that these prices are going to be competitive. In the best-case scenario, these prices are going to reflect the expected prices in the short-run markets plus a rich premium, and therefore these prices of these fixed-price contracts are still going to reflect the prices in the short-run markets. Not to say that forcing retailers to offer fixed-price contracts contradicts the policies to promote demand flexibility, because without this price signal, households won't have incentives to shift their demand from periods when there is, for instance, scarce renewables to when renewables are abundant. What about industrial consumers? Essentially, the proposal of the European Commission leaves industrial consumers unprotected. They are encouraged to enter into long-term contracts, which would certainly deliver stable prices, but again, there is no guarantee that these long-term contracts are going to reflect the true cost of electricity generation rather than the prices in the short-run markets. I believe that the survival of the European industry, some of it, is at risk, and the best way to protect the industry is not really through subsidies, but rather through an electricity market design that allows them to have access to prices that truly reflect the cost of electricity generation. I think the European Commission is right in preserving short-run electricity markets, because they are instrumental to achieve productive efficiency in the short run. And I think that the European Commission is also right in trying to promote long-term contracting, which is necessary not only to deliver stable prices for consumers, but also to support investments in low-carbon technologies. But here I have to say that I disagree on the emphasis that the European Commission has put on essentially the two main channels that we have for long-term contracting, which are PPAs, the so-called PPAs, which is nothing but bilateral private contracts versus auctions for contracts for differences that are backed by the regulators. The bilateral contracts are subject to input and counterparty risk, and therefore the European Commission is asking member states to ensure that there is enough guarantees, so that these bilateral contracts can be signed. I fear that these guarantees will, in some cases, involve state aid, and I fear this is going to put large amounts of public money at risk at the same time as it might give rise to more hazard problems.
Большое спасибо.
Если я могу, могу только закончить, если позволю? Я думаю, что лучший способ уменьшить counterparty risk and promote long-term contracting, to push investments in renewables, is to foster the use of auctions backed by regulators, which at the same time guarantee that the lower price of these contracts are going to be passed on to the final consumers. Я надеюсь, что в процессе обсуждения у нас будет больше времени, чтобы погрузиться в эти вопросы. Большое спасибо.
Большое спасибо. Я теперь пойду к мистер Захману, старому коллегу в Брюгель, и я поздоруюсь его принять заседание.
Извините. Добрый вечер, коллеги парламента. Да. Начнем с последней слайда. Можу ли я перейти к первой слайду? Хорошо. Мы хотим обсудить европейский рынок электричества. Вы действительно должны начать с понимания, что цель рынка электричества. И тогда, что мы делаем здесь, это, в основном, сказать, что есть три главных цели: эффективное использование существующего системы, убедиться, что это公平но, и убедиться, что мы получаем инвестиции. И мы можем оценить компромисс Комиссии. Теперь, что компромисс Комиссии говорит о эффективном использовании существующего системы? Ну, в основном, он держит marginal pricing system, и мы верим, что это хорошее дело, но мы думаем, что оно пропадает на несколько элементов. Первый: оно не предоставляет правильные местные сигналы. Что значит местные сигналы? Если потребление в Франции для электричества высокое, необязательно все power plants in South Germany that can help to fulfill this demand are running in the current system. Второй элемент, который может быть улучшен, это что нам нужно хорошее design of the so-called contracts for difference. Здесь, например, это может быть очень простое contract for difference, которое может discourage солнепанели, которые смотрят восток и производят электричество в вечер, когда нам нужно больше электричества. Так что не только фокусируясь на количестве электричества, но также когда электричество используется. Третий элемент – это encouragement flexibility. Так что мы действительно должны убедиться, что люди заряжают электрические машины и в будущем даже больше, когда энергия充足. Еще один элемент – это риск слишком фрагментировать количество инструментов в системе. Так что когда мы взглянем на инструменты Комиссии, это пять, шесть, семь государственных инструментов. Если мы все получим, это становится очень сложным, где поток денег находятся, и я поговорю о этом позже. И тогда нам нужно убедиться, что мы можем использовать ресурсы в соседних странах. Так что если в Германии есть батареи, то они тоже должны быть использованы в дänской или польской рынке. Второе и самое важное, теперь полностью исчезло, это равнодарное distribution of cost and benefits. Теперь Комиссия предложит ряд вещей, и как Наталья указала, relatively hard to assess whether they are going to deliver, and in my view, they include a number of risks for market fragmentation. In my view again, what should be added is to make sure that the system costs are attributed to consumers in a fair way. So we currently focus a lot on electricity wholesale, but we also have to look about network cost and other elements. And if we, for example, think about the CFDs, it might end up in a world where taxpayers are going to pay for electricity users. So we have to make sure that here the distribution is done in a equitable way. The last point, and potentially the most important one, is ensuring investment, because investment is what is driving down cost eventually, what is helping us to ensure that we're not getting in the situation as the current one. And the Commission puts a lot of emphasis on investment. They are adding a new chapter only on the investment instruments, so chapter three with article 19, and it sets out at least five different investment instruments here: contract for difference, power purchase agreements, capacity remuneration mechanisms, flexibility mechanism, and then you have the speed shaving element. So there is a lot of emphasis on that, but my theory is that the Commission essentially hands it over to the member states. Member states are going to decide which of the instruments they are going to design how, and there is relative, to me, it's unclear how the coordination between member states of these investments are going to look like. So we might end up in a world where member states are going to overbuild certain things, because in other member states we have the similar instruments. We might have elements, or we create artifacts, because we have so many overlapping instruments that we get like five instruments helping batteries, and we get a lot of batteries in the system. Maybe it would have been more efficient to build some gas speakers and wind turbine instead, but because we have these fragmented instruments in each and every member states and little coordination between the member states, we might run into a very expensive system and a very complicated one. Now, a very, very final point, if I get these slides to move to the next slide, yes, on governance. The discussion has shown to probably everybody involved how complex European electricity markets have become by now, how complex they are going to be, and how important they are going to be in the future. It's going to be the oil of the 21st century. Electricity is going to be the dominant vector. It's driving our competitiveness and social energy cost. So we need to find ways to probably deal with it. So we need some European public body that collects the information on that, that makes them available to policymakers to decide, because the situation where the Commission cannot even come up with an impact assessment, because it's too complicated to them, is not really going to work in the future if we want to get science-based and objective policymaking. Спасибо.
Большое спасибо. Я теперь пойду к мистеру Васкончалос, члену НЕУЭС. Мистер Васкончалос, пожалуйста.
Дорогие коллеги парламента, дорогие коллеги! Добрый вечер! Это радость быть здесь и пытаться ответить на ваши вопросы на этом вопросе. Я хотел бы начать помнить, что Европейский парламент, как всегда, сыграл важную роль в формировании внутреннего энергетического рынка, начиная с самого начала в 1991 году. Легальное основание внутреннего энергетического рынка в действительности было в施пране парламента. Это не первая выбора Европейской комиссии. Теперь мы в ситуации, где мы видим все разные претензии. Легальное основание, легальное фреймворк нашего внутреннего энергетического рынка не очень гармонично. Так что я думаю, что время прийти назад к базам, к установлению ясеного, гармоничного легального фреймворка. Энергетическая законность играет роль здесь, не только в инженерии, не только в экономике. Мое послание, я верю, что Европейский парламент должен поддерживать и улучшить компромисс Комиссии, и я попытаюсь объяснить, почему. Почему поддерживать этот компромисс? Во-первых, потому что реформа рынка электричества недоступна. Вчера я шел по моим архивам дома, и я нашел четыре страницы документа, который я представил здесь в Европейском парламенте в 2008 году. Был общественный заседание о третьем энергетическом пакете. И я читал этот документ, этот документ, который я написал 15 лет назад, и я подумал: о, 15 лет потеряно. И почему? Потому что было слишком сильно reliance на экономическую теорию и слишком мало trust в инновационных, технических и социальных инновациях. Я думаю, что это урок, который мы должны учить. Мы не можем afford losing 15 more years. И мы не можем сделать это, потому что иначе мы не достигнем наших целей для 2030 года. Электричество сегодня представляет 23% total final energy consumption in energy demand in the European Union. Если мы хотим decarbonize by 2030, according to the European and national commitments, this means that we should have about 66% or something like that of electricity in total final energy demand. Так что это невообразимо, что существующий рынок-модель, который был создан 25 лет назад для 20% total final energy, будет подходящим для 66% total final energy. Нам нужно учитывать новые секторы: мобильность, heating and cooling, and so on and so forth. Все эти секторы, которые мы собираемся decarbonize through electrification with the existing technical solutions. Мы не должны ждать, чтобы сделать это. Так что это два главных reasons, почему я верю, что компромисс Комиссии должен быть поддержан в первом месте, но они должны также быть улучшены. И я здесь три предложения. Первое – это открыть больше дверей. Представляемый модель сейчас слишком жесткая, слишком централизована, слишком централистична, слишком monopolistic. Мы должны открыть двери, чтобы расслабиться от некоторых этих unnecessary restrictions. Комиссия делает это в своем компромиссе. У них сейчас долгосрочные контракты, не только короткосрочные transactions. У них есть другие типы transactions, как sharing, и все эти компромиссы очень позитивные. Но есть больше дверей, которые могут быть открыты, и парламент может быть очень полезен в помощи Комиссии открывать еще больше дверей, убрать эти unnecessary restrictions, которые у нас сегодня, которые предотвращают массовую deployment of new technical solutions, не только больше PV and wind, but storage and other kinds of mechanisms. Второе послание – это поддержать, активно поддерживать местные энергетические платформы. and also EU system operation coordination. Of course, this is there, you can find language there, but this is not enough. It's not just enough enabling those things to happen. We need to strongly support, proactively support these developments because they are crucial. And mandate full energy digitalization. We are nowadays all very much concerned about IRA and the impact of the American policy upon our competitiveness. And we are discussing more subsidies to use in the energy sector. My suggestion would be not to spend taxpayers' money, but just to define European standards for energy digitalization. As Europe has done in the past in other sectors very successfully. And if Europe establishes the necessary energy digitalization standards, this will assure our leadership for the next decade without taxpayers' money. So the three principles that I always suggest for the transition and this includes the market reform are subsidiarity, which means some things must be done at the European level. Please, let's introduce an European independent system operator. Otherwise, we cannot operate our system in a reliable and efficient way. This is known for many years now, let's do that step. But on the other hand, many things can only be done at the local level, not at the national level, not at the European level. This has to do with energy system integration, right? So 70% of population lives in urban areas. Buildings represent 42%, roads transport 27% of final energy demand. That's urban areas. That's why municipalities and energy communities have a crucial role to play in this transition, in this market reform. Our municipalities, our communities should have the capacity, financial and technical capacity to drive the decarbonization. And finally, again, digitalization and innovation at large. And just to leave you with one picture to visualize how I see the transition and how I see the difference between the existing current model on the left-hand side and the new European model on the right-hand side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I go now to Beuk, to the consumers, and I invite Mr. Lofredo to take the floor.
President Bush, honourable members. First, I would like to thank you for inviting us to express our views on this proposal. A proposal that to our perspective is extremely important because what we observed over the past couple of years is that what consumers need is better protections and better rights in electricity markets. I could talk about this issue for hours, but I propose that for the moment I will focus on three main elements that are important for us. Three elements that are more related to retail markets and to reform retail markets. And this is what I plan to focus today, retail markets. First point is about fixed-price contracts. As we know, in several countries, fixed-price contracts disappeared when prices started to increase. We have evidence, for example, from Italy or from Belgium, where consumers were looking for a fixed-price contract because they wanted to have a guarantee over the price that they were going to pay for energy until the end of the contract. These contracts disappeared, this limited consumer's choice. And to our perspective, it is positive that the commission is proposing to well, to have a requirement for larger suppliers to make available both fixed-price contracts for those consumers who don't want to take the risk and dynamic price contracts for those consumers who are willing to be exposed to wholesale prices. However, to our perspective, fixed prices should be fixed. What we observed on the markets, on several markets like Italy, like Netherlands, like Denmark, is that millions of consumers who had a fixed-price contract saw that the price that they were paying for energy actually increased before the end of the contract. There is an example in Italy where the Italian Competition Authority started an investigation for unilateral increases of eight million retail contracts. And this, to our perspective, is not positive. Because when consumers choose a fixed-price contract, they decide to pay more to be protected against price fluctuations in wholesale markets. If consumers do not receive this protection, then they are not receiving the service that they contracted. So to our perspective, it's important to ban this practice. What the new proposal of the commission has is a ban on these practices. However, the wording is not clear enough and to our perspective, it should be better clarified to avoid any legal controversies afterwards. My second point is about disconnections. To our perspective, it's positive that the commission is inserting a new article protecting consumers against disconnections. And not to say that, well, vulnerable consumers against disconnections. We don't want to say that a vulnerable consumer should not pay for energy, not at all. What we want to see is more focus on the supplier side to allow consumers, to help consumers to pay for the energy and to help consumers to manage their energy consumption. For example, offering them energy-efficient products. To our perspective, what the commission is proposing is positive. However, the commission foresees protection for vulnerable consumers. Then we would like to see extended also to energy poor consumers. We now have a definition of energy poverty in the Energy Efficiency Directive. And this definition covers precisely those consumers who would need some support. And to our perspective, it would be a missed opportunity if the European Union decides not to protect the energy poor. My last point is about allowing consumers to benefit from renewable energy and potentially make savings. The European Commission is proposing to have a new article on energy sharing, which promotes practices and business models where myself as a consumer with a solar panel, I can share electricity with my peers. And to our perspective, this is positive because this can potentially allow those consumers who produce electricity to have a better return on investment, in their investment in a solar panel, but also those consumers who are purchasing electricity from other consumers to make savings in their bills. However, the devil is in the detail as always. The proposal foresees for small-scale energy sharing a blanket exemption from any consumer rights. And to our perspective, this is problematic because although it is reasonable to expect that consumers who are selling electricity to other consumers should not be basically liable for all the requirements that suppliers need to comply with, yet some basic consumer rights should apply. And to illustrate very simply, if I'm purchasing electricity from Christian sitting here, I should at the very least receive from Christian a bill explaining to me how much electricity I purchased from him and explaining to me how much I'm paying based on the electricity that I'm purchasing. So to sum up and here I conclude, we think that there are three major improvements that would bring major benefits for consumers. First one is banning unilateral contract changes of fixed-price contracts. Second, protecting energy poor consumers from disconnections. And third, ensuring that consumers that engage in energy sharing have some consumer rights, some basic consumer rights. Thanks a lot and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And now I go to Mr. Christian Ruby, representing Euroelectric, and I invite him to take the floor.
Thank you very much, honoured member of parliament. And if you get electricity from me, you get it from the market. So it's just for reference. We are facing a very serious situation as Europe. We need to deliver on the 2030 targets that have been set. That requires a build-out of some 700 gigawatts of electric capacity over the remainder of this decade, translating into 80 billion euros of annual investments, 80 billion. That means that the investors need to trust in the market. They need to trust that the framework they are given is also one that allows them to get return on their investments. At the same time, the crisis has shown us that we need to take care of customers and ensure that they have a choice, at the very least, to be shielded from the most extreme volatility provided by the short-term market. In that light, the European electricity industry feels that it is a fairly balanced proposal. It is an honest attempt to propose some targeted revisions that the commission has come forward with. And indeed, we feel that there are several elements that deserve to be preserved in this proposal. The fundamentals of the market model remain preserved. We feel that is very important. At the same time, it is being complemented with long-term investment signals, which we have been asking for a long time. So that's positive. We also find it positive that it primarily takes a market-based approach in the sense that it favors PPAs and seeks to remove barriers for the rollout and massification of PPAs. The use of complementary state interventions should remain complementary as an add-on to the market. And therefore, any use of CFDs should also remain voluntary. Looking at what, let's say, can be improved in the proposal or needs adjustment in the proposal, we feel that on the one hand, it's important to provide customers with an additional amount of choice in this situation. But if customers have an access to long-term contracts, for instance, the change to a contractual arrangement should also acknowledge the transaction cost that it involves. So that's an important point. And in general, striking the balance between customer protection and supply regulation that preserves competition is something that we assign quite a bit of importance to. Another thing that deserves some adjustment is the approach to flexibility. We see that the proposal basically goes in the direction of blurring the boundary between monopoly and market a bit. The so-called peak shaving product basically involves the TSOs as a party to flexibility procurement, which confuses things and essentially risks putting, draining the flexibility markets. So we see some need for that. Another adjustment would be further detailing of the reference to so-called anticipatory investments for grids. We know where the energy transition is going. It is going electric. And that means we will have millions of electric cars, millions of heat pumps, which means that grid operators today should be able to make the necessary investments. So what further to assess? Because there are a few things that we're not completely in love with, to say the least. One of the things that we worry a bit about, to be frank, is the so-called virtual hubs for trading that seek a honorable purpose, which is to increase liquidity. However, we're concerned that essentially we're dealing with a proposal that has not enjoyed any sort of assessment and therefore risks doing the opposite of what it's supposed to do. So we suggest to further assess this before it is implemented all across Europe and to make sure that we know what we're doing because, as I said in the beginning, the stakes are high. If we get this wrong, we don't get the investments to reach the targets and tackle the climate crisis. So let's be careful. Let's make sure that we know what we do. Then we also think that we need to be careful when looking at the emergency framework. And we want to avoid that we preempt ongoing work streams such as the bidding zone review and network codes for demand-side response, all of which could basically do more damage than good. Last but not least, when addressing the review of the REMIT, we need to be sure that we do the right thing for the sector and remember what sector we're dealing with. The electricity sector sells electricity. It is not a financial sector. If we start regulating electricity in the same way and with the same heavy amount of regulation that pertains to banks, that will ultimately increase the cost for the consumer. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. After these very interesting presentations and also many questions has been raised, not only just suggestions for colleagues that will contribute to the improvement of the good proposal from European Commission. We go to the first round, the round of rapporteurs and shadows. And on behalf of EPP, I invite Mrs. Carvalho. She's rapporteur on REMIT and shadow on EMD. Three minutes.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I would like to thank all the speakers for very interest. Some different point of views, but all very interesting presentations. I will start with Mr. Purcell. I like it very much, the distinction of megawatt and megawatt hour energy and capacity. Being an engineer exactly on the energy side, I like the way you have structured your short presentation. And what I want to, you have told us that we really need to have a capacity market, not only electricity market. And my question is, we have already capacity markets in the existing package of the electricity market. Why what we have is not sufficient? What is the main reasons to reopen the calls on capacity markets? My second question to our second speaker from Brugel, Mr. Zakman. You have very well enumerated that we should have good CFD design. So if we could also elaborate on the principles that you defend for the good CFD design and which level of European common rules we should have for the CFDs. Professor Faber, it was a pity that in the last sentence you didn't have more time to elaborate, so I will ask you. You have criticized the option for long-term contract of the commission based first in PPAs and as a second option, the CFDs. You have told us that you prefer alternative options for long-term contracts. So if we could elaborate with a bit more time what you have said in your last sentence of your presentation. To George Vasconcelos, you know, I like very much your presentation. It's very interesting, the concept that you defend based on the digitalization and decentralization. And my question is, being very pragmatic as I am, are feasible in our fast-track procedure of regulation to finalize in few months this task that we have in our hands? That we can include or at least to leave doors open, as you said, for this model to be able to develop before we change the legislation again? Because we hope that it lasts for some time, that is stable. So what can we do in a concrete terms? Is it feasible that we leave doors open to the development of such a model? And to Beuk, to Mr. Lofredo, I would like to ask. You have given us an example how the consumers can benefit from the renewables. And my question is, this is one of the main points. We should make sure that the consumers, being individual or the industry, will benefit from the renewables and the low price of the renewables. So how do you see other options for this to happen? And to Mr. Ruby, just finish my last question. Mr. Ruby, I will ask about REMIT. Not what you have stated, but how do you see the possibility to have more powers at the European level in the scope of the REMIT? What is your opinion? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Carvalho, SND is represented by two colleagues. But first I go to Mr. Gonzalez Casares, the rapporteur of electricity market design. Three minutes.
Gracias, presidente. Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you to all of these speakers for coming here today to give us these very useful explanations and to help us firm up our position. Now, this clearly goes beyond just the electrical sector. We have seen how these prices have had an impact on our economy, have contributed to inflation. Now, we don't have time to really get into all the fundamental details here, but it's clear that this reform is here because we have had problems with pricing. So we've had to rethink certain things that we have not been doing well, some things we have been doing well, but there are clearly concerns amongst the citizens. There has been economic damages and problems with this transition. So I think our priorities are to increase price stability over the long term, going along the lines of what the Commission proposes, to look at storage, so there's more flexibility with supply and demand, to strengthen consumer protection as well, especially when prices are particularly high and when we have crisis situations, as we have experienced, and also to look at the rights of consumers when it comes to energy, but without these free riders that could be damaged by the system. Now, I have a lot of questions, but I will try to focus on the most important points. I will start with Mr. Pucciala. Now, you talked about us not being able to trust in a modern economy with adjust renewables for the flexibility of demand because there's issues of storage as well, and I wonder if that was fixed, if it could be more reliable. You talked about capacity mechanisms as well. So my question is, how with this improvements in terms of capacity, how could we move forward with decarbonization when we're talking about better storage or capacity with fossil fuels? With Natalia Fabra, now I know that you are concerned about something which is very important, which is our industrial consumers. You say that the Commission has left them without any tools. I wonder what specific measures you could propose for us? For Mr. Zachman from Brugge, from my point of view, I think we could have had more explanations on emergency measures. Do you think they're necessary in these cases with high prices? You talked about a European public body as well, and perhaps you could give us a bit more information with regards to this particular proposal. This seems to perhaps be a preliminary step to a greater reform, but perhaps you could tell us more. To Mr. Vasconcelos, you talked about local subsidiaries and how to promote renewables. I wonder how this case with the renewables, these peaks are being produced in certain markets in certain countries at certain times, how we can do to ensure that these market signals are not going to affect renewables? How can we protect investments in renewables? Because I think local is important, but we have to look at the global picture as well. To Mr. Lofredo from Burg, you talked about vulnerable consumers being disconnected, and I think probably my group is the one that best understands the importance of these types of protection. I think it's very important that consumers are protected. I think, do you think this is necessary? And how exactly can we focus this for these contracts for difference? And then finally, to Mr. Christian Ruby from Euroelectric, I think we're lacking these capacity mechanisms in the Commission's proposal from what I have seen. So you talk about these well-designed capacity mechanisms, but perhaps you could elaborate exactly what that means to be well-designed? Now, we've heard a lot of talk about this capacity and improvements in capacity, but if we go in that direction, it would be good to know exactly how to tackle this. I think there are concerns with regards to that. Thank you.
SND is Mrs. Kumpulana, three, two minutes. Remotely, please, Mia Petra, just press the speak button.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, for the opportunity. I will be short. I also think that it was a good hearing and a good comments that we see that we have to do this right. It has been long-working markets that we have had, and in some countries it has developed different than in one. So it's also very important to see the cause why market prices were so hazard for the consumers last winter, not to break existing system where it functions, but then avoid this kind of market possibilities that are uncertain for the consumers. First question to those who want to answer, should there be differentiation of the household consumers and industrial? Then for the first pick, Pucciala, if you have an example of the country or market that there is a capacity lack, because this resembles very much the discussion in the early stage of the renewables, that we were afraid to add it because of flexibility, but then we have seen results that it has been added a lot for the different countries. And I have not seen yet the example of that capacity market has not evolved at the same time, and also flexibility has been helpful there. Then on the consumers, I very much applause the seeing that part and also that all the speakers were favoring more or less the market-based solutions, that we can not add taxpayers' money as an automatic way because we do not have that too much. But very concrete on the REMIT that I'm shadowing, my question is that we have the European electricity markets, European gas markets, but still the supervision is much on the national level. So how much would you look this as the financial markets? We did it too late. First, we liberated capital, and then only later we put the supervision on. If you want to refer that other and national, how do you see this relation? Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Renew, I start first with Mr. Peterson, vice-chair of the committee, also shadow of EMD.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thanks so much for all these great interventions. I think the diversity in the approaches clearly demonstrates what kind of task we're on. I had the privilege of negotiating the market design last time around in 2019. It took us three years. Now we're going to do it in three months or so. So just, I think it simplifies how difficult this is, this will be. Now, let me just touch briefly upon some of the issues that we will bear in mind from Renew's side in the upcoming negotiations. Clearly, the issue of investments and ensuring stability and predictability for investors out there is paramount. And I think the first question to the panel is basically how to ensure this? I know that George has some interesting thoughts also on the need for interim measures, given that now we will be negotiating for, I don't know how long time, but what happens in the meantime? And we see very worrying signals out there that the market is at a standstill. So all the time that we spend on negotiating, this very important dossier and files are, we somehow have to take into account that we will need some sort of gap-filling exercise in order to accomplish our 2030 targets. So that would be a question for the panel at large and not least for George to elaborate on. Secondly, from Renew's side, we're going to emphasize some of the basic principles in ensuring that markets will still have to work, will still work. I have a question on the issue of the CFDs and bearing in mind that devil will be in the detail in this. But I would really to go for mandatory CFDs. Shouldn't there be room for other ways of doing these things than only CFDs? Why should we rule out beforehand that there might be innovation and new opportunities, possibilities out there? So remarks on the issue of mandatory CFDs would also be welcoming. Thirdly, how do we ensure that we still have what will be the remaining part of an internal market here? Because if we open up for member states applying all various kinds of CFDs and PPAs and what have you, how do we ensure that we still have an internal market at the end of the day? Please, I'd be curious for these comments. And then finally, something as boring as implementation. I know no politician is going to get re-elected on implementation. That is so boring. But please bear in mind, we have already adopted some very, say, fundamental reform of this market that we still have to implement. So let's keep that in mind also in the upcoming negotiation. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peterson. The shadow for REMIT of the Renew Group is Mrs. Gammon, please.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank the panel for the very interesting presentations. And unfortunately, there wasn't a lot on the REMIT reform, and I would maybe ask again or ask for a first time, with the proposal coming from the Commission that would add a lot of new ways to, of exchange of cooperation between regulators, more data exchange, more powers for Acer, whether or not you have any comments on that, how you would evaluate this, and maybe also whether or not anybody shares the concerns of Mr. Ruby on this topic? After all, there is a lot in there in terms of investigative power for Acer to investigate cross-border issues, where regulators have said that there might be a regulatory gap and that there have been examples where this could have been useful in the past. And obviously, this has the goal in the end to reduce prices for consumers as well. If the fear is that prices would be higher, I think that this proposal aims at exactly the opposite. But if others agree with Mr. Ruby's criticism, then I would love to hear it. And another thing that has been mentioned a lot on the EMD is the importance of flexibility. There have been a lot more critical voices, I guess, than I would have expected. Something that I would also like to thank the colleague Gonzalez-Casares for is mentioning storage and the importance of it and what this proposal could do to add to this. We now have in this proposal indicative national targets. And also last week in the plenary in the debate on storage, there has been floated the idea of an EU-wide target and whether or not this could change anything, especially in regards to high-capacity projects that still have the hindrance of really, really long permitting processes. So I would ask whether or not you would think that an EU-wide target could maybe be an incentive for member states to prioritize these projects differently when it comes to permitting? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I go now to the Greens, two colleagues being remotely, and I start with Mr. Blos, the shadow for electricity market design.
Thank you.
Ah, you're here.
Yes.
In my notes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Happy to have you here.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think it's really important to, I mean, to see that we are now doing electricity market reform because we had very high prices, but the high prices were not caused by the electricity market as such, but they were caused by the dependence on Russian gas, on fossil fuels, and for instance, also in Germany with recent studies published by the nuclear power fleet of France that just was not working because some of it just didn't work and the others were not working because there was not too much water, so much water in the rivers to cool them down. So that brought electricity prices up. So now, I mean, still, it's really good to make electricity market reform to bring prices down, but what brings prices down are really renewable energies, you know, they have a marginal cost of going to zero and integration of the system. And I think this is what this reform would need to go to. Also, maybe, well, a couple of questions. On the first speaker, if I understood you correctly, there is this idea of opening up capacity markets, but there is no impact assessment and working on capacity markets, is that not a little bit like, you know, then doing a heart surgery but being a little bit blind? Second, on the grids, I really agree that on the grids connection, that this is something important to integrate. So the question is, how can we, what can be done and also how can sector coupling approaches be taken more into account and not only speaking of electricity, but we need to speak also of heat, of hydrogen, of flexibility, all of these things. To the second person, Professor Faber, maybe you could explain a little bit more on the forward market and how to make them work, how to design a product that puts liquidity into the forward markets? And, yeah, no, second, later question, correct? To Mr. Zachman. I really, I thought it's very interesting to, well, to see this question of integration. So what can be done to integrate the grids more and have more of a coordination so that we do not build a lot of, well, similar capacities in different kinds of countries that in the end will not help us?
Thank you so much.
I think it's three minutes, isn't it?
No, two minutes and two minutes, Mr. Dalunde, but please.
Okay.
Last question.
The other question would be just for, from the consumer perspective, do you think that this is already enough or what else can be done, especially with regards to the disconnection bands? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Dalunde, the shadow of the Greens for REMIT remotely. You should open, Mr. Dalunde.
Okay. Thank you, Chair, and thanks to the experts for their excellent interventions and for taking the time to discuss these files with us today. We need to ensure that energy prices are fair and not distorted by market manipulation and ensure that no profits can be drawn from market abuse. We need to increase transparency and ensure that suspicions of insider trading and market manipulations are quickly investigated and perpetrators are properly penalized. The European Court of Auditors' special report of 2023 concludes that there is a real risk of market manipulation. Only eight percent of cross-border abuses end with penalties, and penalties are also systematically insufficient. This is why I, as Green Shadow, see it as crucial to increase Acer's mandate within REMIT, to conduct investigations and enforce rules against market abusers. So I would therefore like to ask the experts, and particularly Professor Vasconcelos, do you support the view that Acer should be given a stronger mandate to investigate market resources, but also a mandate to enforce compliance? Second, Acer is essential to tackle market abuse, especially cross-border, but they are also severely underfunded. How crucial do you think it is that the Council changes its longstanding position and the EU finally agrees to substantially increase the resources of Acer? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Last but not least, on behalf of the Left, Mrs. Marina Mejur. Silvio.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Merci pour ces interviews.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the contributions. As you will have noticed, there is a huge difference between what the President of the Commission stated when she talked about her desire for a wide-ranging reform of the electricity market and what we have before us today, a proposal which doesn't question the actual foundations of that market. So you'll allow me to express a particular position on saying that as far as I'm concerned, the management of the generation and provision of electric power should be under public auspices. There are physical constraints on the grid after all, and it seems to me that the governments are best placed to overcome those constraints. So the first concern, given that we have experts here with us, is this: do they think we should perhaps revisit the supply side and the generation of electricity by the public sector? Then coming back to the Commission's proposal, two questions. First of all, on PPAs. Now, that's perhaps something more for Ms. Faber. You can see that this has created an imbalance amongst economic players, those who are able to plan their purchases and negotiate them with producers, as opposed to the small SMEs and others who won't have the financial means to do so. Apart and beyond the fact that this proposal marks a breakaway from equality in the electricity market, how can we tackle the fact that the PPA doesn't cover short-term changes in electricity market prices? Shouldn't prices of consumers perhaps be indexed proportionate to production prices? Turning towards Mr. Pucciala, looking at the managers of the sector, the Commission is planning to give them some time, allowing the markets to work up to 30 minutes before the time the electricity generated, as opposed to an hour up until now. Now, the regulators are very concerned about this because this may throw the balance of the sector out of kilter and favor carbon fuels to make up the gap. What's your opinion, please?
Now we go to our guests, and the head of secretariat just kindly remind me that we have 18 minutes scheduled. Of course, we still have time, but we have also a second round with a lot of colleagues on the list and one CHTI interventions until now, maybe three minutes each, but, well, if someone is... Maybe three minutes each, but well, if someone is more loaded with questions than others, we'll be flexible. And we go with the same order, and I kindly invite Mr. Purhala to start first.
Thank you very much. So I'll start with the first question regarding the need to open CRMs. And there are basically two needs. The first one is that the proposal from the Commission introduces a rather complex and lengthy process for having a CRM approved. While basically this process comes down to the fact that CRM are only acceptable as a last resort solution where everything else fails. I believe that CRM shall be a standard part of the market design in the two commodity market for which we trade with energy and also with the capacity. And the capacity is a product for which resources get remunerated and then take obligation. It's not a subsidy, it's an obligation to deliver. And if you don't deliver, you pay a high penalty. That's the typical capacity market. So it shall be a standard part of our market design to complement the energy market. Now, the other need to open a CRM is that the capacity market, the CRMs as we have them today, as defined in the electricity regulation, there are restrictions for some technologies. And these restrictions are already materializing, and they are basically banning some technologies from participation in the capacity market from 2025, the ones with emissions. Now, you might think, very good, let's ban all the emitting resources. But if you do so, then you do not have a backup in case renewable generation is not delivering energy. And it will happen. We don't have the technology yet, and we will not have it in the next three years to be able to store all the excess of electricity produced from renewables and use it in the moments of lower winds or lower solar periods. So we're gonna need these backup plants. And if we don't remunerate them for the service they are providing, they will decommission. And then we're gonna be ending up with an energy crisis like we had last year. Basically, every couple of days depending on the weather. And I don't think we shall allow our economy to be dependent on the weather. As I said, these resources will most likely provide capacity. We will run actually quite low number of hours if we expand renewables, and we will expand renewables in Europe, meaning that the carbon footprint will anyway go down, and it will be useful for the society. Now, the examples of countries where the capacity market has not helped to develop, I would argue that the capacity market, generally speaking, helps to develop and has been proven efficient to develop new capacity. Now, I think one example of my country where there are some difficulties is that after 2025, we are struggling to buy any new capacity because the investors do not want to build it because of the regulatory risk. So the stability of the investment framework to meet this huge challenge of trillions of dollars, of euros to be spent to expand generation and networks, we need some stability in this framework. And with the current restrictions, investors are not proposing any new capacity, and the old capacity is not allowed to participate. And we are not able to ensure that we buy sufficient capacity. I'm limited in time, so I stick to my ten minutes.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Fabra, please.
Okay, I guess you can see me now. Thank you so much for giving us the chance to elaborate a bit on the issues that we couldn't develop before. To be clear, I'm very supportive of auctions for contract for differences. And I don't believe that power purchasing agreements are gonna provide a full solution or a satisfactory one. And the reasons for this were already mentioned by the French Member of Parliament. Indeed, when we are dealing with bilateral contracting between two parties, there's no guarantee that the resulting prices are gonna be competitive. There's a strong asymmetry in the bargaining positions of the two parties. Not all the buyers can afford entering into a bilateral contract, which is extremely complex and probably very expensive for them if they don't provide sufficient guarantees for this counterparty risk. Contracts, bilateral contracts or markets for PPAs have demonstrated to be extremely opaque, not to lead to competitive outcomes. And in any case, when we are dealing with PPAs with energy retailers that have to pass on the price of those contracts to the final consumers, there's no guarantee that those prices are gonna be passed on to the end consumers, which is at the end of the day what we are looking for. We are seeing that these markets are failing. There is not enough liquidity of these contracts, and the contracts on offer are not of sufficient long duration. And there is a problem of counterparty risk here. So as I said before, if we wanna reduce the counterparty risk rather than providing estate guarantees to these private contracts that do not guarantee that the lower prices are passed on to the end users, it is better to have the regulator, the system, as the counterparty of these contracts. And how can we achieve this? We can achieve this through auctions for contract for differences such that, first, they are gonna foster more competitive outcomes. We know from a theory point of view that auctions are a more competitive mechanism than bilateral negotiations. Second, making sure that these lower auction prices are gonna be passed on to the final consumers. And third, what is very important, because there is a calendar of auctions, there's some predictability for the industry, for the whole value chain, to know exactly that there's gonna be certainty over the path of deployment of these renewables and therefore also foster the development of the European manufacturing industry to provide the necessary equipment. Regarding the question posed by Mr. Gonzalez Casares, this is very much related to this. If we open or reserve a fraction of these regulatory back auctions to the industry, this is the best way to give them all the buying power to reduce the problem that they have because of not enough counterparty risk, to make sure that the contracts that are being auctioned satisfy their hedging needs currently on their PPAs. Buyers, industrial consumers, they do not get a full hedge of their needs. Why? Because typically, the producers, they sell pay-as-produce contracts that essentially hedge them for a profile that is similar to the production profile, which need not be the same as their consumption profile. So if the regulator is the system acts on behalf of the industrial players, this is the best way for them to have access to a stable and competitive prices. If we rely on PPAs and CFDs, this doesn't mean that we are not relying on competitive forces. This doesn't mean that we are breaking the internal markets. All we are doing is shifting competition, or rather, complementing short-run competition with competition for long-run contracts. And these setups tend to be more competitive. Why? Because we are allowing entry of new players into the market that might have access to better financial conditions if they win one of these long-term auctions. So we are relying on competitive mechanisms. And not only that, but we are also contributing to making these markets more competitive. I think these were the questions that were addressed. Just let me, if I may, just one point. When we are dealing with CFDs and PPAs, this is for the new investments. But let's not forget that there's many existing assets, and we have to do something about this. Because if we keep on paying the existing assets, and there are many of those at the current short-run electricity prices, we run the risk that gas prices go up again, and we run the risk that for the existing assets, we keep on paying extremely high prices that they do not deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sackmann, please.
Yes, many thanks for those, yeah, great question. Was really helpful also for us to see a bit what to focus on. Let me start with the question for the short term and whether we are running into a problem of uncertainty in the short term. So what we have been proposing also in the paper, a broader few copies, is a sort of booster for renewables in an intermediate period. So the reason why we are proposing that is we think there is a significant uncertainty over market design questions that risk to delay people going to invest now because they are worried about what cash flows they are going to get. There is a short-term supply problem in Europe still this year and next year. So every kilowatt that we install this year is worth twice as much or so than a kilowatt that we install in three, four years. So kind of pulling things forward helps a lot in bringing prices down in the near term. We are sitting still on a lot of unconnected renewables. So we can actually, some more can be connected. And the pipelines in some fields like Ansho Wind are drying out relatively quickly. So we need to make sure that we get those pipelines filled. And we agreed with the Repower EU to get a higher target. So this higher target somehow needs to be delivered on. So what we think can be done is to have a sort of first-come-first-surf instrument on a European level that encourages renewables investors to get connected as quickly as they possibly can, potentially sharing the money with network operators to make sure that the connection happens. And there is a fixed amount of money given for that. And through this first-come-first-surf, there's also competition between the member states trying to connect as much as possible, as quickly as possible, so that we really get the boost in order to get over the energy crisis. Because the energy crisis is not over. I mean, we still have the challenge in terms of supply security. We do not share the view that we are through yet. The second question I would like to reply to is on this European agency. We will actually have an article this week in Nature, where we called together also with some of the colleagues here, for a sort of a European energy agency. The idea there is to say, we want to get predictability in Europe. We want to better have better, clearer planning of where our energy system is going. We want to have a benchmark to which policymakers can understand whether certain market design choices, whether certain network development choices make sense. And it does not make sense to leave this to companies only. That needs to be a public institution that has the charge to provide such a benchmark outlook on where we are going. In the end, we still have a market that delivers on that, that makes sure that we get it efficiently. But we need some more planning because things like contracts for difference, we will decide on volumes of contracts for difference. And we will somehow design in these contracts for difference technology preferences. So we need some public tool to be able to assess whether these are the right preferences that we are giving them. That links also to the question of Michael Bloß on the trans-European networks. Here again, we need some top-down element on trans-European network planning. It does not make sense to only make it bottom up because we have got too little of trans-European networks. If we look into the scenarios from modeling exercises, we see we need much more cross-border exchange capacity. A final point on contract for difference design. What in my view is important is that contract for difference are designed in a way that encourage system-friendly investments. So we do not only care about kilowatt-hours and the massive amount of kilowatt-hours, but we care about when those kilowatt-hours are being produced and where. And the ideas for making that happen with benchmarking systems, but I think that it goes too far to explain that in detail now. A second element is we need to coordinate the volumes that member states are handing out in this contract for difference or things. And then a half point, sorry for that, on REMIT because I did my PhD on exercise of market power. And what I experienced twenty years back was that there is no data available for researchers to look into that, to learn how to monitor market power exercise. We are pretty sure that in the last year, supply and demand situation was so tight that it must have been possible to exercise market power. But we don't have developed the tools to be able to do so. So make anonymized data available for research for people to better understand how we can help Acer and other institutions doing their job. Because they, with their small headcount, will not be able to do this methodological work, but we need the data.
Thank you so much. Mr. Vasconcelos, please.
Well, thank you very much. I understand that my plaidoyer for decentralization faces some perplexity because it's new, it's difficult, it's complex. We don't have time, we could frighten investors and so on and so forth. I fully understand those arguments. But please follow me in my reasoning. If we look back to the last twenty years and we look at the statistics of the three largest member states in terms of population, we realize that there was no substantial investment on transmission capacity, zero. In some cases, it was even negative, as I showed in the report published last year with statistical data. Why should I believe that the next fifteen years will be better? Are we sure that we will be able to double the capacity, transmission capacity in Europe? And then let's have a look at demand. Where is demand? Demand is mainly local today, right? Buildings, mobility. Look at 2030, decarbonization through electrification. This means that we are going to double or more electricity demand. Where? In cities. So why are we discussing centralized models, centralized markets, centralized targets for renewables, storage, this and that, when the action is local? So what we need is an appropriate framework, institutional and operational and market platforms at the local level. Because the needs of Athens are not the needs of Copenhagen. The needs of Brussels are not the needs of Madrid. We must accept this diversity. Otherwise, we are trying to impose a single price with multiple subsidies. And I believe it would be better to have the other thing, multiple prices and no subsidies. Now, it takes some time, then it takes some courage, yes, but things are complex. On the two concrete questions about Acer and state ownership, but maybe just a last point. If we look at the investments in the past decades, more than sixty percent of electricity generation was connected at the distribution level, medium and high voltage level, not at the transmission level. So this happened in the past, and this is what is happening nowadays. And nowadays, what we see is a huge deployment of storage, electrical and thermal storage, because all the electric vehicles and heat pumps are nothing else than huge storage capacities being installed locally in a decentralized way. But they are not taken into account in our plans for 2030 because we only think in a centralized way. About Acer, I think that Acer needs more than just more money. Acer needs the institutional recognition as a European regulator. We cannot have a well-functioning internal electricity market without a European regulator. I'm very sorry, but it's just a matter of fact. Logically, it does not work, and historically, it does not work. Look at the United States. We can learn from the existence of state and federal regulators. We are not going to invent something else. So we need to reinforce not only the staff, but also the competencies of the European energy regulator. On state ownership, very quickly, I don't think frankly that replacing the existing structure, replacing in the existing structure private companies with public companies will deliver the results we expect in terms of affordability and the decarbonization by 2030. Because what we need is a new institutional setup. What we need is to think about a new role for the public authorities, in particular for municipalities, in articulation with the national authorities and the European level. So if we don't change our mindset, if we don't look at this issue of the role of the public authorities in shaping the transition, and we think that just by having public money given to those companies, we solve the problems, frankly, I don't think that this is the way. I see an increasing role for public authorities, but it's mainly on shaping and managing this very important issue of energy system integration. Because only them can do the necessary public debates and then reach the necessary trade-offs because there are lots of trade-offs. And these are the citizens in each city that have to meet. They have to decide how they want to move in terms of decarbonizing, heating, or whether they want to have a district heating network or a huge massive deployment of heat pumps or something else. So that's the way I believe that we should work.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. LoFredo, please.
Yes, thanks a lot for the questions. So answering to Mrs. de Grasca, your question on how we can make sure that consumers can access the benefits of renewable electricity. on how we can make sure that consumers can access the benefits of renewable electricity. I'm afraid I'm going to say the word implementation twice, and I hope it's not boring. On the generation side, what is lacking is implementation of renewable energy electricity. Consumers who feed electricity into the grid still receive too little remuneration rates. We have a study by our Dutch member, Consumerment and Bond, that shows that half of the suppliers in the Netherlands give back to consumers only 70% of the wholesale price, while two suppliers out of 30 give consumers back 7% of the wholesale price, which is too little and is not in line with what is written in the Renewable Energy Directive. So first of all, there should be a focus on implementation. Secondly, this idea, this promotion of energy sharing is positive because it gives consumers who generate their own electricity a different avenue to sell the electricity they produce. On the consumer side, so on the consumer who consumes electricity, again, there is a lack of implementation of the clean energy package. Consumers in principle should be allowed or should be entitled to sign up for a dynamic price contract. If they can sign up for a dynamic price contract when there is a lot of renewable electricity available in the system, and if they can shift their consumption to those times, then consumers can make savings because electricity would be very cheap. On top of implementation, though, this new proposal does something that is positive, which is granting consumers access to a dedicated metering device. Some consumers might be willing to sign up for a contract exposing them to wholesale prices only for those consumption patterns or those products that can be used more flexibly, like a heat pump or a electric vehicle. So what the Commission is proposing, meaning granting consumer access to a sub-meter or a dedicated metering device, is very positive. However, again, David is in the detail. What would be needed is a requirement for national regulatory authorities to calculate what the cost of this metering device and of this rollout of a dedicated metering device is, so that then can set some tariffs that reflect these costs. This is important to avoid that consumers overpay to have a dedicated metering device. Moving to the second question, I mean, the question by Gonzalez Casares and by Michael Blos. How can we better protect vulnerable consumers on top of what's in the proposal? I'd say three things. The first one, energy sharing. An idea could be to target a certain percentage of the electricity produced by the solar panels owned by public authorities like municipalities to vulnerable consumers. So to make sure that a certain share of this electricity that is going to be affordable gets to vulnerable consumers. This would be a concrete way to reduce their energy bills. Second point is about CFDs, making sure that the revenues from CFDs are targeted to vulnerable consumers. Rather than giving the revenues to everyone, that would be a drop in the ocean for everyone and would not benefit anyone really. Because those who need the money will not receive enough money, and those who don't need the money will be able to pay a dinner out, which is nice, but I guess it defeats the purpose. It would be important to target these revenues to vulnerable consumers, preferably by giving them access to renewable energy, so allowing them to install solar panels or to shift to energy efficiency. The last point is about helping those consumers who don't have a smart meter to monitor their electricity consumption. A smart meter rollout is only 50%. There is a risk that during the winter, since consumers only receive information on their energy consumption based on what is expected that they will consume over the year. So there is a risk that consumers during winter or during summer in southern countries might lose track of how much electricity they are using. And these may lead to very high settlement bills when the meter is actually read and consumers receive a bill based on the actual consumption. A concrete way would be to require energy suppliers to regularly inform consumers and regularly invite consumers to self-read their meter and send the self-reading of their meters, so that they can better track their electricity consumption and avoid the risk of settlement bills of thousands of euros.
Thank you so much. Mr Ruby, please.
Thank you. Starting with the topic of capacity mechanisms, this is a topic that also generates a lot of intensive discussion in the industry itself. It really depends on what regions people come from, whether they like these or not. As the electric, we see a structural underinvestment in the firm capacity that's needed by the market and in storage and DSR as well. Even if they're picking up, they're far away from what we would need in terms of delivering on the energy transition. So how would they be designed with a view to deliver here? What was agreed in the Clean Energy Package was that these would be measures of last resort and that there was a preference for a certain type of mechanisms. We believe that this should be an integral part of the market for those who choose to go that avenue. It may also be that parts of Europe would not opt for this, but it needs to be an option to basically systematically integrate it and for those assets that are part of a mechanism also to participate in the market. If these are set up as markets, as capacity markets, this does not have to basically be a public subsidy. And then, of course, it's important that they're inclusive so that they support investments in the DSR, in storage, in the wide variety of different types of assets that are needed for the transition. And that, I should also underline, also includes flexible power plants. These will be needed for a long time to come if we want the reliable electricity sector that we can base a big part of society's energy needs on. To the second question of, do we have a gap to fill? I think it's fair to say yes. Investments in the energy transition are off track. If the deployment pace continues at the current pace, the 2030 targets will take more than 20 years to deliver. And that means we need to think about how to speed up. That's about investor certainty. And the question of implementation here, I think we should really think of in the context of the governance regulation, which will be reviewed once we come to the next commission. We do face a situation where it's tempting to introduce more things, more measures, emergency measures to do this and that. The risk is that we add confusion rather than a clear way forward. And last but not least, to the REMET. Now, it's very difficult to be against transparency. Of course, we're in favor of a proper transparent market, and we are in favor of basically being able to find and prosecute people that manipulate with it. The question is, how do we get about this to a process and a proposal and a legislation that delivers on this? Again, this is a proposal without a proper impact assessment. Are we comfortable to go forward in a way where we do not know exactly what the impacts of what we're doing will be? We raised that question. The existing framework has worked fairly well. Always room for improvement, but we believe that the right way to do this is to take the proper time, analyze things, and go forward in a structurally responsible and informed manner.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We go to the second round. We have 12 colleagues. And if you can, please ask the question in one minute or make a comment. It will be very helpful because then we have a second, a third round, actually, of answers and interventions from our guests. I start with Mrs Nibler, EPP.
Thank you so much. Happy to attend the hearing and thanks for the interesting contributions. I have to admit that I'm not sure as to whether I have a clear picture as to whether the objectives which we want to achieve with this reform are really going to be met. So I would like to ask the experts two questions. So really, are you sure that with the proposals and all the instruments now proposed, we get more competitive energy prices for consumers and industry? A lot has been said on the PPA, on the CFD, but could you just elaborate on the virtual hubs once again and the peak shaving instruments as well? And secondly, you mentioned that the investments in renewable and grid infrastructure is key. I agree. Trust is needed for that. So again, just to give me a more reassurance where to look at in more closer detail. So do you think what's on the table is the right approach or it's not the right approach? I learned that capacity markets, as the first speaker said, are key as well in order to build them up. I agree on that. And I also agree on the fact that the energy crisis is not yet over. So we have to have a careful look at it. But again, are the instruments, what are the instruments where you think we really should reshape once again? And last question, maybe also, you know, on the regional energy cooperation and the issue of subsidiarity versus market integration. I have not a good feeling. So what is the message I have to take out from what you've said? So I learned we need more regional cooperation, but how does that fit with the idea of this market integration? I would be happy to learn about that. And as regards the European Energy Agency, which had also been stressed, I do agree that we have to work on to reshape and to talk about the competences this European Energy Agency has to be vested in. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mrs Nibler. Mr Nika, please.
Thank you so much, Chair. So dear colleagues, January last year, in this very room, I said in the name of our political group, SND group, that the current market design, it is a clear example of a market failure. And I will give examples. The citizens unhappy. The level of the bills are the level hard to be believed the year before. The same for the industry. At least those of them which already went bankrupt. In the meantime, we said that because the lack of transparency and because the market manipulation and because the unfair trade practices, there are entities who made hundreds of billions of euros, tens or hundreds of billions of euros. And we said that is totally unacceptable. And we said that we have to have a new energy market design and we have to be sure that everything will be transparent. That was the key words we used at the time. I noticed that from some of our speakers, it is like, okay, let's have a kind of reform, but not a real one. Maybe kind of business as usual because the current model, we have to make small adjustments. But this will be totally unacceptable and it will be a huge blow and it will be a huge failure from the European Parliament if we don't manage to shake the system. Because the current model, it is not a model designed to protect neither the consumers, private or industrial consumers, nor to preserve our most important values, which is transparency. Most probably, we have to think about that if Acer is the right entity to take care of the energy market. Most probably is ASMA. Because Acer, it was in April, I think, one year ago. They said, that's perfect. We have a nice model. This model is perfectly functional. But this is totally unacceptable. And on the REMET, we have to take serious measures. Winful profits doesn't mean that we have to put taxation. They have to pay taxes on their turnovers because somebody paid the prices and this led to the inflation. 80% of the inflation is due to the energy prices.
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to also thank the speakers today. I give them time to put their headphones on, but I'm going to say just one minute of your time, no more. Just to say that I think that this view of the electricity market is really key. It's key for the consumers to be able to really reap the benefits of our electricity system. I see three key benefits: energetic, economic, and climate benefits. Now, there's an energy benefit because thanks to this market structure, there's going to be a guarantee of supply. Economic, because we're going to try and get them at reasonable prices. And also climate benefits because it's going to be decarbonized. So just to sum it up, I think that this review should ensure that the amounts that are actually reaped through the long-term contracts, such as the CFDs, actually finds its way to the households and also to industry to lighten their burden, their bills. So I don't know whether you agree with this. How can we ensure that the excess revenue is actually fairly redistributed? So can it actually help both the producers and also the consumers? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Chair. I go for my one minute. I had initially two questions, but the first one was largely answered by most of the panelists. So I go for my second. I must say previously that, thank you very much to all the panelists. Your presentation was really clear and eloquent as well. It's an important aspect of the story. Well, the Commission proposal promotes power purchase agreements, but excludes energy-intensive industries from the electricity crisis mechanism. Being these companies, commodities, they find great difficulties in transferring the energy cost to the sale price, especially if the prices are set internationally. Shouldn't this industry, in addition to SMEs and households, be included in the emergency mechanism? My question, since we have to save time, goes for your segment from Bruegel.
Thank you so much, Pilar. Mr Blos, one minute.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Just two more questions. So the first one is to Professor Fabra. If I get you correct, then your main concern with the PPAs is the amount of state aid involved. And you prefer CFDs. But isn't the main question that, like, the question is which instrument to take to reduce the amount of state aid? And what are the best mechanisms for this? Maybe you can elaborate a little bit on this. And to Professor Vascon Celos, now we have, well, the Commission proposes to use CFDs, but leaves a lot of room for member states. And they can also, I mean, they can make technology-specific CFDs. So they can make a specific CFDs for nuclear. How do you see the impact of this kind of specific support for nuclear in terms of business case for renewables and renewable, yeah, well, the deployment of renewables? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mr Geier, please. Mr Geier, Jens.
Thank you, Chair. I will speak German. My question is about a possible tariff for industry, for electricity. We have the problem that throughout the European Union, prices are higher here than in the global price for electricity. And I think that this is because we want to avoid any competition distortions, we've got to make sure that we're able to be competitive. Now, and someone's got to pay the difference in the market there. And I wonder whether you see any approaches within the Commission's plans to try and make up for these differences.
Thank you so much, Mr Geier. Mrs Piraki, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much. This exchange has taken too long, but it is important to make a very short, very brief comment when it comes to the main issues that we have to tackle. And the first one is, how can we incentivize long-term contracts with non-forgive power production? And I think that we cannot exclude any kind of solution. We have to include PPAs, we have to include contracts of difference, two-weight contracts on difference, and also forward contracts, that is part of discussion as well. The second is to bring more clean, flexible solutions into the system to compete with gas, meaning that we need first decentralization, and I fully agree with Mr Vascon Celos' approach. And also, we need to increase the transmission capacity by investing heavily in this regard. And third is to streamline the EU energy market by integrating it and avoid unfair competition between member states in the energy sector. Mr Vice President, Mr Peterson, has already opened this discussion. So according to my opinion, I have two questions to pose on this discussion. The first one is, how this model will facilitate the upscale of innovative solution regarding, for instance, clean hydrogen, not only as an energy car, but also as an energy storage facility? And second, how can we facilitate the cheaper renewables? And in this regard, how can we integrate the cheaper renewables into the system in particular to the variable consumers? My third question is concerning on the issue of transforming the mandate... My third question is concerning on the issue of transforming the mandate of asset and creating a hub in terms of collecting data. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Zorinio, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The parliament is keen to contribute to an effective reform of the energy market. We don't just want cosmetic measures. Even before the pandemic and the war, we needed reform. It's even more urgent now. And we need to combine sustainability, predictability and flexibility. Now, I'm grateful for the contributions, in particular to George Vasconcelos. He set out a structure which would provide strong motivation with a cross of a multi-level distributed market with guarantees for integration, competitiveness and sustainability of the system on a local basis. That's why we need predictability. And we have to take the steps which will allow us to modernize the grids and the platforms, including digital platforms. Mr. Vasconcelos made a few specific references to the PPAs, et cetera. But I think it's important to get some more detailed comment from him regarding how we would fund this, with a political vision and trust. There has to be trust in the system. The point was made, he had this vision fifteen years ago, he said. Ten years ago, the world looked rather different. So how are we actually going to finance this proposal? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I'm very glad to see that the proposed reform of the electricity market design takes an inclusive approach to nuclear power, for instance, with regards to the contracts for difference. What makes me a bit confused, however, is how the European Commission won't seem to make up its mind, really. On one hand, we have, for example, the position of nuclear technology in the Net Zero Industry Act, where nuclear power is not listed in the annex as a statuteic net zero technology. On the other hand, we have actions from the Commission that strive in the opposite direction, for instance, with the taxonomy and, as it seems, the electricity market reform. And since we don't have the Commission here today, I instead want to ask the question to the experts that are present. What is your opinion on how the reform of the EU's electricity market design can affect Europe's nuclear power? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Poncatti, of yours.
Thank you. I have a question for Professor Fabra and Mr. Zachman regarding marginal pricing and the new long-term mechanisms that this reform seems to be adding. Could you please elaborate a little bit more? And I mean, this, to me, looks like, you know, tinkering with the marginal pricing approach to market design, which for us who believe in economic theory, I know that not everybody shares that, but it would have been surprising. Somebody asked the committee to ignore, I don't know, theoretical physics or mathematics, but we have heard something like that today. Nevertheless, I would ask these experts to see if they can elaborate a little bit more about how they see the preservation of the basic mechanisms of marginal pricing under these CFDs and long-term pricing. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one catch, the request, Mrs. Weiss, please.
Thank you so much. I have just one question to Professor Zachman from Brugge concerning coordination between member states. I don't think anyone can disagree on that. But could you elaborate a little bit more in explaining us where does the proposals not reach the potential hereof? What are your recommendations when it comes to that? And also, where do you see some challenges also concerning subsidiarity and the respect of member state competences when we articulate over and over again? And we applaud it because there is some kind of a logic to that when it comes to market integration. Right now, we are opening the directive and hopefully also closing it again without damaging also subsidiarity issues when it comes to market integration, but also in a way where we really boost the coordination. So could you please elaborate a little bit more on that? That could be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. No more interventions. We go back to our experts and using the same order, it's the easiest way. I'll start with Mr. Purhala. Same eighteen minutes scheduled. We are already a little bit behind us, but we still have interpreters with us because the slot was longer. So please answer to the questions. And if you have a final remark, final conclusion, it is the moment to use it. Each of the esteemed guests. Mr. Purhala, please.
Thank you very much. So I think the most important question was whether the consumers are happy about how competitive the market is and how competitive the energy supply is. And obviously, the last winter shows that not everything is perfect, that we are vulnerable to supply shocks. And we need to do our best in order to increase our resilience to such supply shocks. What is, for me, quite important from last year, from last winter, is that we kind of lost one source of energy supply and the other energy supply sources were not able to ramp up. And I think we need to make sure that we have the ability in the future to have energy sources which are indeed able to ramp up and produce electricity when it is necessary. For me, this comes down again to the question of megawatts versus megawatt-hours, meaning generation capacity versus the produced energy. We need to have in Europe resources which are able to generate electricity when the consumers need it. And we need to have diverse technologies so that any supply shocks will not cause too much of a problem and too much of a price increase. When it comes to the tools to achieve that, so as I try to explain in my intervention, I think the capacity elimination mechanisms as proposed by the electricity regulation is the right way forward, but it shall be a standard part of market design. And there is no need for this state aid and analysis and all this burden. If we do a market-based capacity market in places where we have excess of capacity, the value will be zero or be very low. So there are going to be no extra costs for consumers. In areas where you need to have significant buildup of new capacity because the system demands it and the consumers demand it, then obviously the value of the capacity will be higher. I also shared my opinion that the technology limitations in the capacity markets, the ones which are embedded in the new proposal and in the old proposal, there are having consequences. And these consequences are also for the consumers. Because if there is not enough capacity to be provided from sources which meet the restrictions, the price of the capacity goes up. And even in some situations, the, it's not possible to buy the necessary amount of capacity to provide the consumers the guarantee of security of supply which they need. Because simply, there is no supply of such capacity. And in the last sentence from myself is that today, we are building towards a green future without emissions. And we will look for new technologies which allow us to make the best use of renewables. And everyone is working very hard to do so. However, until we have these technologies, we still need to use what we have so that we are able to still power the modern economy of Europe and we have the ability to do R and D, to have these new technologies, new storage technologies, roll them out massively in Europe and also build new dispatchable clean technologies, which don't exist yet. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Fabra, please.
Hello. I fully agree with Mr. Nika when he says that European citizens are going to be disappointed if we don't manage to provide a satisfactory electricity market design that addresses the large wealth transfers from consumers to firms that we are consenting if we do not change electricity market design in meaningful ways. Why are they going to be disappointed? Because indeed, and answering to Mrs. Niebler, electricity prices are not competitive and they are not going to be competitive under the current proposal, essentially because there is no new elements on the table. No, the energy crisis is not over. And not only it is not over, but we are exposed to the exact same fears as we've been exposed to over the last two years. The European Commission proposal contains some ingredients that are welcome. And among them, and I'm now addressing Mr. Woodler's question, is the ability to directly return the revenues of the contract for differences to customers directly. This is something that was not allowed before. And now it has been completely understood that when regulators auction off these contracts, they are just acting as market makers. And therefore, it is consumers who eventually, ultimately, are the party that is going to benefit from these lower prices that are achieved through auctions. So responding to Mr. Blas, no, there is no public money involved in contract for differences. Just the regulator is committing some electricity prices for the future that are going to provide the source of competitive and stable prices for the end users. Instead, on the contrary, if we want to promote PPAs, we have to put public money on the table because we have to guarantee these contracts, which, by the way, are highly risky. Why? Because the buyers will have a strong incentive to walk out of these contracts. Because in the future, thanks to the deployment of renewables, electricity market prices in short run, markets are going to go down, which is going to give them a strong incentive to walk out of these contracts. Clean hydrogen, well, really, the best solution for promoting clean hydrogen is to make sure that the hydrogen producers have access to electricity at competitive prices, which, as you know, is one of the main inputs for hydrogen production. So if we are serious about promoting renewable gases, we have to be serious about achieving competitive electricity prices. Theory regarding marginal pricing, while I'm also a theorist, and what we know from theory is that these markets guarantee or promote productive efficiency, yet the competitive electricity market model is based on an assumption that doesn't apply in practice, which is the lack of free entry. Because there is no free entry, these excessive profits that generators are making are not competing away. Nuclear power generators, hydropower generators, they are receiving prices that have exceeded 200 euro per megawatt hour when their costs are one-tenth of that. These profits are not competing away because of the lack of free entry. And therefore, the competitive market model doesn't apply to electricity markets. Just to conclude, I think the stakes are high. I think that the European citizens are expecting that we solve this problem, that we do not consent anymore that power companies make large profits while they are suffering from energy poverty, while they are losing their jobs because the European industry is going elsewhere, while they are paying higher mortgage fees because interest rates have gone up as a consequence of rising inflation. I think the stakes are high. And I really welcome the initiative of the European Parliament of having this public hearing to hear our views on this important topic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I will invite Mr. Zachman now.
Yes. So, I mean, as I said, the crisis is not yet over. We have too little energy in Europe for the foreseeable future. If you look into the futures prices, and that has nothing to do with the distribution within the system, but with a lack of volumes. So the cake is too small and too many people want to eat the cake. Now, the question is, how do we allocate a too small cake if not with the signal of prices? And it is unfortunate news. But if we want to give a larger share of this cake to industry, that does not only mean that the prices for everybody else are increasing, but also that they need to get a smaller share of this cake unless we invest massively. So in principle, the Commission approach to say we put our focus on investment is the right one. Because it's the only way that gets us out of the crisis without us having to reduce massively our consumption. So that's the only structural way. And this structural problem is staying for a couple of more years. Therefore, quick investments are the structural solution. Now, on the cross-border, and this is the big reform. Now, I don't think that this now here, what we are discussing, is the big reform that brings us to net zero emission-ready electricity system. There are so many things that need to change for a net zero emission electricity system with doubling electricity demand, much higher share of volatile renewables, motor centralization and so on, which are not properly addressed in this reform, but which need to be quickly addressed properly. So we need now to prepare the ground, hopefully, maybe in this legislation or on the side of it, for a process, for a discussion that allows us in the next legislative mandate to come up with the big reform that really sets us up for providing credible investment signals in the full-scale decarbonization, electrification of our society. I actually like Roger Vasconcelos' idea on the local experimentation. I think maybe there is a way to opening up individual pieces for that as a starting point to test out what can work. Because, I mean, we don't have enough examples. So maybe allowing some regions to experiment is an interesting, yeah, competitive way to test those elements. And then on coordination between member states, I think one of the challenges is if one country devices a support mechanism for a certain technology massively, then this technology will be very cheaply available or the product that this technology produces in all the other countries, reducing the investment case for this technology in the other countries. If one country deploys 100 gigawatt of batteries, like Germany plans to do in one of its plants, it might be more difficult to justify such investments in other countries. So there are significant spillovers. And we need to make sure that not one country can essentially flood the market with certain types of products. This needs to be coordinated. The NECPs might be one way to have this discussion. This energy agency that we are proposing can be one thing. Opening up in the legislation, making sure that it needs to be consulted with neighbors, might be a way. But we need to find ways to make sure that not one country can essentially determine the fumex of other implicitly.
Thank you so much. Mr. Vasconcelos, please.
Thank you very much. Just to avoid any doubts about my way of thinking, I am an European federalist. I advocated here the creation of an independent European system operator. I advocated here the creation of an European energy regulator. But the rational application of the principle of subsidiarity today leads me to the conclusion that the action is mainly at the local level today. And that's where we should put our focus. Of course, we want to keep our internal market, but the internal market can exist in many different ways. We are not going to radically change what we have. The Commission's proposal is a pragmatic approach, is releasing some, relaxing some of the restrictions that we have today and allow for other ways of managing our system. What I say and what I advocate is that we accelerate, that we open more doors, that we create more opportunities for innovation, technical innovation on storage, which has been mentioned many times, on participation of demand, on many other things that are possible only through digitalization. So when it comes to the issue of many of these tools that we are discussing here, I must confess that sometimes I feel puzzled. Because I hear remarks about some tools as if they were revolutionary, new. I'm very sorry, but this idea of having bilateral guaranteed state prices, I implemented them in 1997 when I was a regulator, without auctions. We had a guaranteed tariff, a feed-in tariff. And what the regulator said was, okay, if the market price is below the feed-in tariff, you get the difference paid by consumers. If the market price will be above your guaranteed tariff, you don't get the money. The consumers get the money. And that's exactly what's happening now and what happened last year in Portugal. That's why the Portuguese consumers don't pay more than 80 euros per megawatt hour because that's the average price of the stock of guaranteed, state guaranteed prices that we have. By the way, in Portugal, about 60% of the generation has a state guaranteed price. And in many other countries, the figure is also above 50%, but it's not fashionable to. but it's not fashionable to talk about that, I'm very sorry. So some of the mechanisms are really not new. It just requires some strict application of some sound principles of equity. Now, investments. I don't see the issue, being an investor myself, on generation, frankly speaking, or on storage. I am working on projects for storage and for renewable generation. The problem is on the networks. We don't have enough network capacity, and that's the bottleneck. So where we need primarily new investments is on distribution networks and transmission networks subsidiarily, but mainly on distribution networks. And decisions on massive investments on distribution networks are political decisions. We must accept the fact that we cannot de-politicize energy at this level. Because these choices at the local level about how to decarbonize heating or how to decarbonize the mobility are political choices. And I see no reason why someone should impose the same choice in Athens or in Copenhagen or in Frankfurt or in Brussels. I'm sorry, but I'm an Europese. I don't want to impose the same choices. People have the right to take different approaches. And this leads to different kinds of investments at the distribution level. So we need different kinds of regulation for distribution networks. But what we need desperately is investment on networks, on the hardware and also on the software, on the digitalization of these networks. Because if the networks, if the infrastructure is not there, the other investments are useless. What all we do is to accumulate curtailment. And if consumers are paying to the generators which are being curtailed, this is madness, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
So the priority should be investments on the infrastructure. Don't worry too much about investments on generation because there is enough will and money to invest on that. What we need is a clear picture that we are now here to support, actively support innovative solutions, technically speaking, and also in terms of involvement of the citizens and business models. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lofrado, please.
Yes, thanks a lot. There was a question on, well, how do we allow consumers to benefit from renewables? And, you know, although I already answered to this question focusing on delivering the products and making sure that consumers have access to products allowing them to benefit from renewables, such as dynamic electricity price contracts, there is also a part that is linked to information to consumers and making sure that consumers receive information on these innovative products that they can understand in a way that they can understand what are the potential benefits. There is a requirement in the existing Article 11 where suppliers should provide consumers information about the potential benefits that they can achieve with dynamic electricity price contracts, which again was not implemented anywhere, so implementation would be good. But at the same time, the Commission, the new proposal, is suggesting to further improve these information requirements so that, you know, potentially many consumers will be nudged to sign up for dynamic price contracts. And that will allow them to save money if they're able to shift their consumption. But information, it's not only before the contract, it's not only important pre-contraction information, it's also important information that consumers receive during, when they sign up for that contract and during the usage. There is an interesting example, and actually the most downloaded smartphone app today in Estonia, where, well, most consumers are on dynamic price tariffs. And it's more downloaded than Facebook and, you know, all those apps which are developed by big tech, is an app that allows consumers to track hourly prices so that they can manage their consumption. These innovations are important to facilitate consumer engagement in flexibility, allowing them to make savings. And I want to close, just, well, repeating my three key messages in my opening remarks. This review is important. This review is important for three reasons. Firstly, it's about better protecting vulnerable consumers and allowing vulnerable consumers not to fear disconnections anymore and allowing them to access to support from suppliers and from governments. Second point, it's about restoring consumer trust. Consumers who are signing up for a fixed-price contract, paying more for having a guarantee that the price that they will pay until the end of the contract remain the same, those consumers should have a guarantee that this price will be fixed and this will not change in a manner by suppliers. The last point is about promoting energy sharing in a way that consumers can trust, that they can engage and it's a safe environment by making sure that consumers who engage in energy sharing enjoy appropriate consumer rights and protections. And thanks a lot again for the invitation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ruby, please.
Thank you. One word about investors. Let's remember, the challenge of the energy transition is a gigantic investor challenge. Investors are looking for return on investment, they're looking for something they understand. And right now in the US, they have the RA, which is very easy to understand. It's very easy to get a very strong business model out of the RA. Now, therefore, the word complexity is really, really critical when we look at what we have at the table here. Let's avoid that we introduce further complexity into the European legislation, which is already today extremely complex. Twenty-three products for flexibility alone in the electricity market. It is a highly, highly complex thing to deal with energy in Europe. And therefore, to the comments about the virtual trading hubs, we would really urge to say, if there's something we don't even understand as the sector, I don't know if anybody in this esteemed house understands what's on the table. If nobody understands it, is it really something that's going to help the investor challenge that we have? Same goes for the industrial tariffs, whereas we can understand the idea that we need competitively priced electricity, a specific tariff for industry. The first question that comes to mind is for what industry? Is it for all industries, from chewing gum to steel? Or is it specific industries? And if, in that case, which industries? For me, that would be a question of state aid still. And I would urge that we leave this out of this reform to avoid further complexity. Then we had the question about renewables. How do we then get the renewables going? Because we all understand that getting a lot of cheap renewables into the market is ultimately the key solution, along with saving energy, by the way. Now, the central approach that's been advocated by some speakers, Fabra, Ms. Fabre, in this discussion, let's remember that a central approach also entails a risk, and that's called the regulatory risk. We have examples of completely failed public tenders because they were poorly designed. So by shifting from a decentralized model to a centralized model, you introduce another risk. So a strong bet on a centralized approach is not a good idea. Also because, as we've heard from Vasconcelos, we are talking about, at least in part, a very decentral transformation of society. So do we really think that we can steer this all centrally? Let's be careful not to become the source of apprentice and think we know what everybody else has as their preference. Let's make sure that there is still a market for people to intervene, to interact with each other, to buy electricity from each other and sell electricity to each other. Also on the tenders and on the cheap renewables, one of the things we have to acknowledge when making sound public policy is that prices have changed. It's no longer an option to ask a lot of money for people to have a piece of seabed because that way, we're just not going to have the investments that we're looking for. We need to acknowledge that prices have increased. And when setting up tenders, which by the way are a fine idea in complement to the market, let's make sure that these tenders are structured in a way that allow them to reflect price increases. That's going to be critical to get more investments into the market. And on top of that, I think we need to accept that unnecessary centralization will really be necessary. If we go that way, with too much centralization, we are going to harm things more than we think. Last but not least, how is this going to affect nuclear? Well, I think it's important for this reform to make sure that countries that have decided on nuclear and that want to continue with nuclear are allowed to do so. Crowding out one technology at this stage, which by the way is carbon-free, would be detrimental to the energy transition. So countries that decide so should be allowed to continue along that pathway. And what I've heard from the industry is that the existing reform with the complement of long-term instruments such as PPAs would be sufficient for them to basically make their necessary investments. Again, the forced approach, basically telling companies, you're now forced to take on a new contract that is politically determined, that's the recipe for disaster, that's the way not to induce more investments.
Thank you so much. Last words, the two rapporteurs. I start with Mr. Gonzales Casares and then Mrs. Carvalho. Mr. Gonzales Casares.
Gracias y gracias a la señora Carvalho por dejarme.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak first because I have to leave quickly. This has been a very interesting debate. I think a lot of questions have been answered. It's been very helpful for the debate, which we have limited time for. So thank you very much to all of the speakers, it's been very interesting. I just wanted to raise one point. I think there are a lot of points where we have overlaps here. Now, we understand the complexity here. The five or six speakers today have agreed on certain points and disagreed on others. I think political groups have a similar situation. So there are points where I agree with Maria or disagree with Morton and vice versa. I think this is very enriching as part of our debate that we are following and that we will continue to have. I would simply say, please remain open-minded and bear two things in mind. We need better protection for the consumers. We are moving towards a more decarbonized system with more renewable energy. So having a better price for renewables has to be reflected by what the consumers feel as well. Otherwise, you're not going to have people buying into this energy transition. So that is important. And secondly, we need to move away from fossil fuels, but this cannot be done overnight. We have to accelerate our investment into renewable energies. We have to show that they can be profitable. Now, it might appear to be trying to square the circle here, but that's not what we're doing. It's a progressive path we're following here. We know that it is possible. This reform won't be the last one over the last few years. That's important to bear in mind. And just finally, let me say, I think there are certain agreements, certain points in common here between the different speakers, the different sectors, that we need to have better distribution, we need to have better investment. So I would call on all of these stakeholders and speakers to see how we can do this, how we can move forward. We need to actually go from ideas to legislative texts. Now, I know this is very complex, but all assistance is very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The last word, Mrs. Carvalho.
Thank you very much, Chair. I would like to thank all the speakers and all the colleagues that have intervened because it was a very interesting debate. I agree with Nicolas that there are points of agreement and points that trigger more discussion. And I would try to summarize what I took from this discussion and points of agreement that we need a market design that leads to investment in a secure, low-cost net zero system, special investment in distribution network. Second, that ensures that the system costs are attributed to consumers in a fair way, that protects consumers, mainly the vulnerable and the energy-poor consumers, and rebuilds consumer trust, that opens doors to, promotes innovation and digitalization, and that promotes more market transparency, especially using the remit. I would say that these are points that we had an agreement. And the points that trigger more discussion is the degree of enthusiasm that the different speakers put in the support to the European Commission proposal. Also a point that needs further discussion is the need to reopen the capacity mechanisms market and the appropriate instruments for long-term contracts and the design of these instruments. And in the end, the level of responsibility and articulation between local, regional, national and European. So points that we will, of course, discuss until the presentation of the reports and the amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Carvalho. I'd like to thank, first of all, of course, our guests for their presentations, their thoughts, their suggestions, and also for answering to the questions. And to colleagues, first of all, those who are very much involved as having responsibilities on those two files, the rapporteurs, the shadow rapporteurs, but also had some of the coordinators and some colleagues that are extremely interested, first of all, to work on the file and second, of course, to be in contact, listen to the experts, listen to the voice of industry, civil society, consumers, professors, academia, in order to understand better what are the challenges and how we can improve the text. As I said before, at the beginning of the meeting, we go very fast. We try to accelerate as much as possible to finish this dossier by the end of the year. Clearly, this mandate, at least our calendar is very ambitious, but also very tight. So amendments, colleagues, until 23rd of May, not so much time. And also if the stakeholders, the partners, have ideas for concrete amendments beside, of course, the principles and the things that were shared today, please send to us before the deadline. And then, of course, there will be time to discuss amendments, to build compromises, and then to vote. And I'm sure that also the discussions with the Council during trilogues will be extremely interesting and challenging. Once again, thank you for being here. Thank you to ITRE Secretaria, to the interpreters, also for extra time, and to the services of the European Parliament. Colleagues, you tomorrow at 10 o'clock for the votes and coordinators at 9 o'clock for taking the necessary decisions. Thank you.